Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Tuesday, fifth day of May, 10:00 a.m. on our, for our Weber County Board of Commissioners meeting. Happy Cinco de Mayo and happy Takeout Tuesday. A lot of things to celebrate today. A good, a good share of us have our masks on, which is a good thing. I've got mine here that any given moment I can put it on. Commissioner Harvey has his ready to go if needed. So we welcome everybody here. I'm Commissioner Gage Fleur, to my right Commissioner Jim Harvey, to my left Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We welcome you here today and we're going to start today's meeting with a pledge of allegiance with famous Todd Ferrario, invocation with Brian Barron, and then I'm going to give the thought of the day. Let's go to that point.
And please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful spring morning, grateful that we could be gathered here together to participate in the governance of this great county. We're thankful that the restrictions on COVID-19 have been eased a little so that we could meet here together in person and we pray that we'll be able to continue to make progress against this disease. Please be with and bless those nurses and doctors who are treating those who are sick and the first responders and, and help strengthen them and aid them in their fight against this as well. Guide us with thy spirit in the decisions that we make this day, this we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd and Brian. Commissioners, my thought of the day, as I was giving that some thought last night, which actually I do on occasion, though I've been accused of not doing that, came to mind that we have an important day coming up this week, which is Mother's Day. Sunday, May 10th is Mother's Day. And as we all know from our personal histories and our childhood days, mothers become a very important part of our lives, one of the, probably maybe the most important for a lot of us, that as we look back of, and what we have become today, and which is always, in my opinion, for the better, that we've learned a lot of these lessons from our mothers. And they play such a significant part of our growing up years, our formative years. And without that, without that guidance, without that education, sometimes in, has to be in a little harsher manner for some of us than others, but always in a, delivered in a kind spirit and with good intentions to make us better people. At least that's my opinion. But with that, I pulled up a couple of quotes that I think really go to the heart of what mothers are about and, and as we celebrate Mother's Day, I would encourage everybody to make sure they reach out on this important day. Some of us unfortunately don't have our mothers to, to reach out to. So I would say this, first off, if your mother is still available for a phone call, personal contact, a card, you want to do that because they're not here forever. And once they are gone, you realize how important and how much you miss the opportunity to, to let them know the love and respect that you have for your mother. So a couple of quotes, if I might, commissioners. "Mother is your first friend, your best friend, your forever friend." That was a known, known, unknown author. I think that hits the spot. I think all our mothers, obviously, at least in my opinion, are always started off as a friend, somebody you can go to and talk to about both the good and the bad. "Mother is the heartbeat in the home and without her there seems to be no heart throb." I think that also is very true. And lastly, mothers are like glue. Even when you can't see them, they're still holding the family together. That was by Susan Gill. I think that's very true, that they are the glue. We look for them to hold that family, that family unit together and we're blessed to, to have them in our lives. Again, I encourage anybody that has a mother out there to reach out to them, let them know you love them. Those that we no longer have, we realize how important they are. So that's my thought, commissioners.
Thank you. That's great thought.
Thank you. So before we go to public comments, I'd just like to make a shortcut. This is our first time back in chambers for what, about a month? It's great to be back here, even though, you know, we still like each other, we're just a little separated by, by distance here. But it's, it's great to see that we're making some progress. And as much as we have enjoyed and I think been very productive with our Zoom meetings, at least in my opinion, it's nice to see that, that upfront and personal face. I just don't think there's anything quite like the personal interaction we can have as groups as we meet to discuss the, the business of this county. But again, welcome to this. Hopefully, this is something that we will continue on a weekly basis. I'm talking about our public meetings here rather than go back to the Zoom meetings. But as we've stated very clearly, that's really going to be dependent on what hat, what takes place over the next two weeks, month, two months in terms of our infection rates with COVID-19. But I'm optimistic, the numbers that came out yesterday were good, that I saw. No new infection, no new infection. So again, hats off to our Weber County Health Department, hats off to the general public. They're the ones that have really taken this serious and put us in the position we are today that we can open some of these businesses. I actually, last Friday, since that was the, the day of opening, I took the opportunity to go out and visit a local restaurant for, for dining in that night. And they, they did a great job of, the waiters were there with their mask on, their gloves, they separated everybody. So the restaurants, the dining in people are taking this very serious. And that's what I, I really wanted to see. Plus, anything we can do to support our local businesses, we need to do it. So with that, commissioners, let's go to public comments. I'm sure we're going to have one here. Welcome, Ralph. Good to see you. You've got three minutes, Ralph. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I want to say thank you to you guys, the county commissioners, and everything you've done to be able to go ahead. Need to remind everybody that we're all first responders here that have, have programs and have outreach and different things like that, too. It's not just the, the health department, they're getting a very big focus and I do thank them very much. But we have a responsibility 24/7 to 365 days a year to be responsible to those less fortunate than we are. Let's tell those who are blessed to be able to have a house, to be an apartment, somewhere to go, somewhere to take care of our families and be able to have food in our bellies and stuff. There are many out there that right now do not have those necessities. And that's, and I don't mean those things to be overemphasized because they can't be. One thing Barb Marti said, and as I've always been a big Barb Marti, said that we can cure racism, we can solve all our problems with an injection of music and love. All I want us to do is have that continued effort that we've been having for the last year, that I've been with you and before that, couple of years myself I've been doing and, and others. During this time Harvey's been on me about being out and everything too, but as I told him and everything too, it is our responsibility even more so even now to be able to be responsible to those less fortunate than what we already have in our everyday lives. I've sent a letter to you that the Lantern House had written. Lauren does a fantastic job. And as, and we would like you to be able to put together just a letter of support to go behind that. We've got the city council and the mayor's office also doing that. Because the efforts that we put out, I went to 20, 17 places in Davis County and I went to 23 out here in Weber County during this time and to get new food routes of, of response for food and, and needed things for Lantern House and the different places. We've mobilized Youth Impact to be able to take it with the badge. We're being able to step up our efforts during this time because we have a whole nation together and the world together that's doing COVID cares and all the different things to be able to go ahead and tend to those less fortunate than they are. And that's one of the things that I want to do this time. I don't want to go out and I'm taking nine millimeter like I did last time, I'm taking tanks. I'm taking tanks because I'm getting you guys to write something, the city council writes something, mayor's office to write something, public works to write something, and all the way down to Greg Montgomery and planning commission. So I have all that right there behind the ladder, on the weight of Weber County, Augen City and the other towns surrounding that want to go ahead and put together an effort to be able to show that with that music that we've been singing in their ears and we've been truly affected in being able to go. We now have at Augen, check out Otech and Davis County, that free education for some of the people that show proficiency in this. Martinson up at Weber State is willing to. All that started with you guys being doing what you said, special effort on yours, Scott, and everything done with the LHCC and this, and then us on the ground, Ralph, and they now up here doing what we do to try to go ahead and put those efforts out there. I just want to reiterate to you that we, we sung a beautiful song, you guys, but let's just keep it up and let's triple our efforts and go ahead and do what we can to show proficiency even more so than we did the last year. I want to report and say to you now, we got 51 families that have moved out of the Lantern program and out to the shelters and stuff. They're into apartments, they're into houses, they're into jobs and stuff. During this time of COVID-19 that's going on, workforce service has been immensely helpful in giving me information so I can send people out to different job opportunities that are out there and labor type things. Also, our stores and different things, packing in new foods and stuff like that has been a way for us to have resources. I just want you to, to take that seriously, to be able to back us in our effort. And you know I'm not going to quit, Harvey. So you might as well just slip the letter there now because I'll be back and that's, and I call you every day anyway. So you'll be hearing it every day. But just a letter, it just says that you were behind the efforts of Lantern House and the mission program and being able to come together as we have during the LHCC and we've mobilized to be able to provide not only for those kids that are missing the school lunches and the school breakfasts that were there, but we have their older siblings now, we have their parents now that, that are in need. So let's be responsible for there. I just want to thank Weber County and the citizens of it. We are one of the lowest in the whole state because we've taken a responsible action here and let's continue with that type of thing and just do what we can to get us through this. Just remember that this time, whatever music we're sending now, right now, we already given that love because I'm telling you guys his name, I'm name dropping you guys every day. So just know that. And you guys knew that when you met me. And as every one of the people that are homeless and in diverse situations, they know we teach who their, who their commissioners are, they know who their city council are and who their mayors and Johnson are and all those of you guys that are responsible physicians there that they know that they love the music you've been singing, let's keep it going.
Thanks, Ralph. Appreciate it. I don't see that we'll have much of a problem getting that letter, so.
Well, it's been how many weeks? I'm ready to go. I know that I'm going to 49 here in Weber County and 32 in Davis. So you guys get your.
My comment.
Go ahead. Commissioner Jenkins.
So it's been interesting, Ralph, you mentioned the Lantern House and how well they've done. I have to agree with you. I've been so impressed with what Lauren's done out there. And we've had, we've had 19 tests out there where we thought we might have an infection and, you know, we worry a lot about that. And it's been tough to test them, 19. They've had to chase a couple of them down the road. But we've been able to test them and keep that virus out of there and to their credit, I'm way impressed with what they've done. They've just done a tremendous job out there and.
I did have to add one thing, mask. If you guys in any way, shape or form that you can provide any mask that can be passed out, we'll do it.
That's good. Well, I see, we got an email yesterday that UTA is giving masks out. I'm trying to remember where that was now.
17th of August.
Yeah, and on 25th, they was going to give 250, so yeah. Anyway, they've just done a really good job at the Lantern House. I'm really impressed with Lauren, what she's done and, but we ought to give her an atta boy or an atta girl.
Atta girl. She does, they do amazing job down there, Lauren and her staff. And it's amazing to me that we have really come out of the Lantern House without more positives testing and more cases that could very well spread in that.
Knock on wood.
In that population. So let's, let's hope that continues, right?
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
And you, you probably know this and Ralph, you probably know this already, but Lauren at the Lantern House has already passed out all the masks out there. It's already done. It's already, that's, that's old. That, that news is old.
We need more.
Well, we, we'll, we'll continue to, we'll continue to take care of that part there, Ralph.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, obviously, we, Weber County support the Lantern House as much as possible. They do a great job. With that, let's go to the consent items on the consent agenda. Number one, request for approval of warrants, number 2703 through 2711 and 449244 through 449352 in the amount of $1,369,319.82. Number two, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $74,481.31. Three, request for approval of the minutes for meeting held on April 28th, 2020. Four, request from the Augen-Echols Conference Center for approval to surplus theater conference center equipment. Five, request from the Weber County Sheriff's Office for approval to surplus eight mountain bikes. Six, request for approval of change order. Number six, on the Staker-Parsen 12th Street Project contract for irrigation changes along 12th Street. And seven, request for approval of change order number seven on the Staker-Parsen 12th Street Project contract for Weber Basin water line changes. Commissioners, questions, comments, before I go to Ricky?
None.
Ricky?
Ricky, can we go to you?
You bet. Commissioners, this week we issued 16 purchase orders for $74,000. Just over a third of that amount, or $27,000 is for the library, which will go primarily to purchase sneeze guards as well as some laptop replacements. 28% or $21,000 is for the jail and that is primarily for inmate clothing, but also for some flooring for the medical clinic. And then 15% or $11,000 is for the sports shooting complex flagpole and those, those are pass through funds, they received donation for that. As far as checks, we received, or we are sending out 118 checks for $1.4 million. 59% of that amount, or $810,000 is the 2019 tax increment payment to Summit Mountain Holdings Group. 10% or $133,000 is construction costs for the archery building. 9% or $117,000 is for Weber Housing Authority and that was home construction on Pingree Avenue. And then 6% or $81,000 is for the sheriff's office to purchase dash cams.
Questions, commissioners? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve those consent items as presented, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jenkins. No other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it's aye, motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Let's move to action items.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Go ahead.
You know, while we're on the comment about the expenses, some of those were for the archery building and I just can't, I love to comment on that because it's fun to watch it progress. So I go out there, I try to go out there once a week. So last, I haven't been out there this week, last week I was out there. I don't remember, it was Tuesday or Wednesday, but the, they're sheet rocking and mudding right now. So the office, you can walk in there right now and see exactly what that building's going to look like when it's done. And it is a lot of fun to walk out in there and see that and see what we're doing and where we're going and what they're planning on doing and it's just a lot of fun. I'm just telling you, it's, I'm really looking forward to that thing coming together. They've done a tremendous job to this point and Todd, kudos to you and your crew out there. But it's, it's fun to watch it. I really enjoy it.
We're excited to see that come about, aren't we?
Very.
It's going to be, it's going to be a great facility. Todd, you, Parks and Rec, you've done a great job. No question about it. Any other comments before we move on to action? Okay, let's go to request from the Weber County Ramp Board for approval of the EZ Ramp Grant Recommendations. Commissioners, you have those on your agenda. On our presenter will be Shelley Halaseed. Go ahead, Shelley, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
The ramp board met a week ago and they had $120,000 in requests for EZ grants. Those are grants that are $2,000 or less. They ended up picking 56 for a total of 60,000, which is amount, the amount that the commissioners have decided to set aside for that, those smaller grants. They also discussed some of the difficulties they're having for some of their projects or programs with this COVID-19 situation. So they came up with some ideas and some plans on how to handle that and also how to handle the possibility that next year's going to be a little, have a little less funding for ramp grants. So with that information, we're just asking for approval for these EZ Ramp Grants. I believe you have them in your packet. Do you have any questions?
Questions, comments, commissioners?
No comments. I'd make a motion that we approve them.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Jenkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carries. Thank you. Thank you, Shelley.
I'm going to leave the wipes here in case.
And I'm glad that the, the board recognizes, the ramp board recognizes that next year may not have the same level of funding as we have now. Obviously, we know where sales tax dollars are headed and we're hoping that's a short term downturn, but it will be an impact, so.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it should be mentioned that these ramp grants just really do a tremendous job. You know, when this was passed, if you remember, the Taxpayer Association came out against the concept and, and I understand why, but this was a, one of those deals where they chose to tax themselves, a small increment for this. And when you look at the projects across the county that have been completed because of this, it's just overwhelming, some of these projects and how, you know, in my little town out in Plain City, we've got a park out there that was, the land was donated, well, partially anyway, and the, it was all finished with ramp dollars. And so, you know, even smaller towns like Plain City benefits from this. And they're just, it's just wonderful, the recreation and arts, museums and parks that come from this money and how we're able to all benefit from it. It's great.
It is.
There's no discussion at all about that? Can you comment on that?
No, not, no, not right now. You've had, we've had public comments. We're going to go ahead and move forward.
I mean, on the issue of that ramp grant.
No, we're not taking public comment right now. Get with us later if you'd like, but you've had your opportunity before. Anything else?
No, it's great. Thank you. Wonderful.
And you brought up the, you know, tax issue that we all dealt with when we talked about this in the legislature.
Right.
I think we struggled with that, but in the end, this turned out to be a great thing. In my opinion, I supported it from the start because first off, it was supported by the public. The public had an opportunity to weigh in and the number of dollars that come from out of state, our visitors contribute a great share to this amount. So it's just not our local citizens that contribute to this fund, which is, in my opinion, a good thing, positive change.
Absolutely.
So with that, we, we had a motion and we had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, carries. Thank you. I think we did that twice, sorry.
It's okay.
Make sure, that's just to make sure that you know that it's approved.
Really want it.
Really want it. Okay, let's go to request for approval of an agreement binding between Weber County and Augen City regarding the city's review approval of certain Weber Center site plan changes. Scott Mendoza, you're up.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, you guys. Thanks for taking a second to consider this agreement. The reason that we're bringing this to you is because back in the summer of 2018, the county submitted a site plan review application to Augen City to show the city and to get their approval on some changes around the, the area of the Weber Center here. And as you know, these changes are because of the soon to come demolition of the existing Weber Center's parking structure. The county did submit that application and the county received Augen City's plan approval. And the county also received some temporary reductions in the amount of landscaping, the amount of parking spaces, and Augen City also allowed a reduction in a front yard setback. Parking lots have setbacks from the front property line and in this case, Augen City approved a four foot set, a four foot reduction. So the county's new parking lot will only need to be 11 feet back from that front property line. These reductions are the subject of this agreement. These reductions are the subject of this agreement, and what the city's basically asking you is that you commit to redesigning the site and coming up to the ordinary standards within the next five years. There's no budgetary commitment here in this agreement. It's just a commitment that you'll submit that new application about this time in 2025. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
So we have a few years to come up with that plan.
Yes. In the agreement, it says to either come up to the current standards for, again, the landscaping setbacks or the parking space numbers, either come up to those minimum standards, or at least submit an application. So yes, in between now and five years from now, we would want to come up with a plan, have that all drawn up, and in a form where we can submit that to the city for their new approval.
Okay, Scott, so I think I understand that, but just to be clear, we're not making any agreement that restricts us to parking spaces, et cetera, now. We're saying that if we, if we don't live by that, we have to submit a plan for their approval. But we don't, we're under no constraints right now that we have to live by that we're, my question really goes down to, I don't want to put burdens on future commissions that may not be feasible. And, you know, we know that Ogden City's been a good partner, but I think it's always better to keep our options open as we look, as we look to the future.
Yeah. In the past, the county has received an approval to have 296 spaces here for parking, for example. The current reduction is down to 111, and the county's able to provide 111 that are here on-site and additional parking spaces that are actually off-site, within a reasonable walking distance. So the county's still providing those types of things, but temporarily, they're only requiring that we have 111 on-site. So in the future, we would need to come up to a, to a current standard.
Right. Got it.
So not a significant burden.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments?
No, I think this is actually good for Weber County, especially in light of what we're learning about jobs and how we work more independently, more distantly from home and some. There could be a big dynamic fallout, especially now. So I know this plan's been underway for more than a year, but the timing, I think, is really fortunate. And I think it's very fiduciarily responsible with taxpayer funds to do and operate this program like this. It's a good idea, so we'll move forward here. I would say, Mr. Chair.
Is that a motion, or?
I was just going to say, if you'd like to motion, I'd be happy to make it.
Please do.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agreement between Weber County and Ogden City regarding the site plan and the changes as it relates, especially to parking.
Thank you very much.
Well, second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Jenkins. I'm going to call, place the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you. Scott, appreciate the, motion carries. Appreciate, Scott, your work, Sean's work with Ogden City. I know this hasn't been a very easy negotiation, but I think that this is a good negotiation, a good agreement as we move forward. Thank you very much. Let's go now to a contract between Weber County and Douglas Archery for concessionaire at Archery Park, one of Commissioner Jenkins' favorite venues, so.
Good morning, gentlemen. It's his once-a-week haunt. This is a very basic concessionaire's contract. As you guys know that have walked through it, there's a small area that's a pro shop, really to do technical work on bows and some minor repairs. What we did is we spoke to all the archery companies that were in our county, actually out to Davis, because there's only a couple, to try to formulate what worked out best for us. The gentleman and the company is called Douglas Archery. Kyle Douglas just won the 2020 Vegas Shoot, which is the largest shoot in the world, and nice check for $54,000 for a 23-year-old man. But he is very skilled and very respected. The next biggest archery company is Wild Arrow that's in Centerville. They work a lot together. What we were trying to do is build our business, make sure we have somebody that fit our needs, but we weren't excluding future opportunities with others. Wild Arrow still wants to do some shoots at our place, so it's, it's really a good plan. What it looks like, the 30,000-foot level, is we get 5% of every dollar that he sells in that. And the reason we moved, we have different contracts for different vendors. The reason we went from 7% to 5% is he has some big-ticket items. There's times that he sells a bow that could be upwards of $1,500. It's not all one- or $2 candy bars, if you will. So we figured that we looked at the amount of space and what his income is. He's currently in Harrisville, real close to our office. And we kind of looked and figured this was really good return on the square footage and good for our community, so.
Appreciate that. Todd, questions, commissioners?
I think it's a nice creative way for us to utilize the space, but also to have customers have some expertise. A great guy there. You know, I'm going to go for just a second here, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, when I was a young man, even before I was a young man, my dad participated on the Ogden High School Boxing Team in 1946, '47, and '48. They used to have boxing teams in high school, and that's because back in the early, in 1910, the 20s and the 30s, even the 40s, some of the greatest boxers on the planet came right out of Ogden, Utah. Greatest ones that ever were here. And we, and the area adopted that in that time, and it was really a great thing. Well, the same thing's with archery. Some of the greatest archers on the planet live right in this geographical area here. And with Mr. Douglas, another opportunity. You know, some of us that are a little older have a memory of Denise Parker, a 14-year-old gal from out north Ogden who won the Olympics. And so we have had some really fine archers in our area, and this is another way for us to support an industry, an all-ability industry.
Correct.
That would be indoor, and so it's controlled. Todd, you've done a wonderful job creating something over the top of an old landfill that now is useful for everyone to go and be able to use it. So we're really, really happy with what you've done. Thank you.
You know, that Denise Parker, she was on Johnny Carson. I seen her on that. I seen her shoot the hole in a lifesaver.
Yeah.
Well, I won't say it's Johnny Carson, but tomorrow, we're filming a video with Dicio Group that will have our manager, Mike Luna, and Kyle doing a little preview of what to be expected. They'll do some drone footage, kind of from inside to outside, and get an update on the complex and our expected opening about mid-July. And we've been kind of sending Instagram, and Sasha's been working with Mike. We send her pictures frequently, so it's getting out there.
That's great.
Great.
This is great. Thank you, Todd. If no other questions, commissioner, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve a contract between Weber County and Douglas Archery.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Todd, let's move to four, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and the Masters Touch LLC for printing, mailing, and emailing valuation notices and tax notices. Mr. John Bond, welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you very much.
That's a colorful mask you have on. We like that. It beats my black one by a long way, so.
My wife made that, so I thank her. I'd like to ask your consideration, with Ricky Hatch, our clerk auditor, and I both presenting this somewhat together, to, to consider a contract with a new printer. We started a new printer for the evaluation notice and tax notice a year ago. We've been with a group in Logan for a number of years. But this new printer gives us lots of flexibility, and that contract does reflect a lot of new savings. And I'd like to just take a minute or two and express how those savings occur. It also gives us lots of flexibility as far as colors, stuff like that. I've got a... This is Ricky's valuation notice that he came up with, and so that, that turned out really well, I think. Here's our tax notice. Simple as it is, this pie chart.
Beautiful.
Grabs it, and it gives a really quick explanation. The back gives us lots more flexibility as far as multiple years, explaining what's going on.
You've done a great job on those tax notices, John.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to express this piece of paper right here. It has the, the tax notice, or the proposed tax increase for the dispatch last year, as well as the tax increase for the unincorporated area that the commissioners looked at a year ago. This piece of paper cost us $4,200 to print, and it had to go out to every household in the county because dispatch is on everybody's tax notice. It also went to everybody that's in the unincorporated areas because we have multiple areas where it can go to. Based on where it goes, we can just send it out to site-specific or to the entire county. $4,200. Had the county spent their $10,000 on printing and postage, and had the dispatch spent their $28,000 on printing and postage, it would have cost 38,000 to print and send a postcard to everybody that was affected by this piece of paper. The savings, therefore, just because of this capacity with this new printer, went from $38,000 that we could have spent doing it independently on a postcard to $4,200. That saved $33,000 just last year. So maybe years ago, you remember the, the tax notice that had perforations on the outside and things like that? Had we continued to use that, last year, we would have spent $47,000 just to print. We need an additional $32,000 for postage. So the tax notice could have been roughly $78,000, $76,000. Well, because of the new printing and the reductions that we've done over the past several years, this tax notice costs us $10,300 to print instead of $47,000. It might be small in the county's budget, but in our office, it's a big deal. We also have the ability to reflect, to add and put a variety of things in. This, we used to spend $1,800 on printing coupon books for people that wanted to prepay. This costs $62 to send out to all those people that were involved in coupon books. So as you look and you add up all these differences and these cost savings and everything else, I think changing to a new printer that gives us lots of flexibility is not only wonderful to work with, and they've been great to work with, but it gives us lots of cost savings. I'm going to put Ricky on the spot because I, we didn't hand him plan this, but do you have any comments about the new printer?
I'm not sure if we're going to talk about the electronic delivery, so I'll save that.
I didn't, but will you take that?
Oh, you bet. So the, one of the main reasons why we selected this printer was the ability to, their ability to issue at the taxpayer's request, electronic notices rather than mailing. This is a convenience for the taxpayer who may prefer to receive those electronically, but it's also a savings for the county that, in that we don't have to print those notices or mail those notices. Those can go out at virtually no cost through, through email, and still meet the requirements of the state as far as noticing. We, these documents are so crucial because they, they lay the foundation for property tax appeals, and if you get them wrong, it's a big pain, and it's really hard for the, for the citizens. And as we set out probably two years ago to begin to redesign these documents, to make them more friendly, readable, and understandable, and informative, it took us several months working with a design consultant and several iterations before we sent the first draft to the printer. And normally, it's a back-and-forth process that can sometimes take 10 iterations before you get it just right. As we sent out our first draft, our, our proof to them, and then they sent back the very first one, we had one change. And, and we were at a final document. They were phenomenal to work with, very responsive, timely, and just did a great job designing it. These documents are complex with a variety of fields that have to be, some are dynamic and some are static, changing or not changing with each property. So they did an excellent job with the placement of those and the spacing requirements, which are quite tight because they're dictated by state law, many of them. And their response rate was tremendous. Quick response and accurate programming and design. That's all I have.
My last comment is, we don't do this alone. Oh, my word. Lisa, in our IT department, unbelievable talent to make all this click, to send all this data, these 4,000 characters per parcel, and get them all correct and right in the same spot. So we, we have a lot of partners in this in our, in our building, as well as with the printer, and it's, it's an amazing job to, to jump into and make it work right every time, but we've had a lot of help. Anyway, that's our short presentation for the consideration for the contract.
Thank you. That's, John, Ricky, you guys do great work. I have, do have a question on electronic delivery.
Please.
In fact, I'm glad I was going to ask about electronic delivery, so I'm very happy to hear that's going to take place. So will that take place in 2020 for delivery of tax notices?
We actually started last year.
Okay.
We, we did, and I think this year, again, we will do both, just to make sure everything's in sync. Meaning, we sent out paper, paper notices to everybody last year, and we'll probably do that again this year. But we also sent out email address or email notifications last year for the first time, and we're just building a database of email addresses. We had to go to the legislature to get that permission to be able to do that because it was not legal at the time. So we got the commissioner, or to the legislature to approve that, not only for tax notice, but for the valuation notice. And we also, this year, got legislation to approve to protect our email addresses so that people can't buy those off the county. And that way, we have more confidence in the public to give them to us, and they're protected as a private, as a private record. So we're going to probably, our, our plan is to, again, this year, send out both, but next year, well, in 2021, will be the first year that we'll probably just go full-fledged email addresses, email notices to all those that want valuation and tax notices, and then just go from there, and the tax savings will just continue to build from there.
Yeah, and I would encourage you to get to that point. I, I think electronic delivery is where we want to be.
Yep.
And encourage people to get there as quickly as possible. I mean, nobody wants to see the 30 envelopes stacked up on their desk. Sometimes it just makes people mad to see that, and so.
We're building that foundation. Those also, we send email, emails to all of those larger ones. And so they get them all electronically. They send us a database back or file back, and we just post them all automatically.
That's great. Questions, commissioners?
Moving in the right direction. John, you continue to amaze me with the way that you've saved the county money in different ways throughout the years. It's just, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And, you know, people say, well, it's maybe not a lot of money in the big scheme of things, but when you worry about the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves. And so, and that's what you're doing here, is worrying about the penny, the pennies. You know, in every department, we do that, but John, you, this is a great example of what you have done, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Bond?
Yes, sir.
Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the contract between Weber County Master Touch LLC for printing. And in doing so, I want to thank Mr. Bond myself. John, you've done a great job in your department and as a treasurer of the county, and I have to agree with Commissioner Harvey. It's like every other year, you're coming up with something to say. It's funny, you do a really good job.
I have a great staff.
Yeah, you do have a great staff.
Plenty of credit because I have a great staff.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Harvey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. John, let me just tell you also, thank you. Weber County is very fortunate to have you and your staff in the position you, you are. And I'll tell you, without you and the work you do, Weber County wouldn't be as successful in, in working with our citizens that we do today. So again, thank you very much for what you do. Okay, let's move on to action item five, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Lindsay Watkins to assist in fulfilling the data collection requirements of the Indigent Defense Commission grant requirement. Mr. Barron?
That's a mouthful. The county received some grant money from the State Indigent Defense Commission in October. One of the requirements of receiving that money was that we would provide data to the Indigent Defense Commission. Our attorneys tried to provide everything that they were asking, but it was such a large amount of information that the attorneys just couldn't get it all. So we asked the Indigent Defense Commission to let us use some of their grant money to hire an administrative assistant who would help gather that data. And they approved that, so this contract will be fully funded by them. We put it out to bid. We got 143 applicants, and Lindsay Watkins rose to the top, and we're excited to get it to work.
Thank you for that. Does that conclude your presentation?
That is. Any questions?
Questions, commissioners?
No, I appreciate being involved. I want you to know, commissioners, that I did receive a, a letter or an email from a concerned citizen that we were not putting the money back into. This is the money that would have come from the prosecution, leftover prosecution money for those, those capital cases. And this is money that is coming from that fund. We can't just take that money and put it in our general fund. It's earmarked. It has, it's for a specific purpose. it's, it's for a specific purpose from that fund, and it has to be used for these types of purposes. So with Brian and his crew, they've found a way that we could still capture some of that money. It's not Weber County money. Any leftover money can't go into our general fund, but it's a way to help our, our local attorneys. And so I, I commend you for doing a great job and figuring out ways that we can still better our representation of the citizenry here. So thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract between Weber County and Lindsay Watkins, if you're ready for that.
I'm ready.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Second. We have a second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. You have a contract, Brian. Let's move on to six, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Nora Rudin for a DNA analysis expert. Mr. Barron, back to you.
So the county's got an obligation to provide attorneys for indigent defendants, but we also have to provide defense resources, which includes investigators, expert witnesses. So one of our defense attorneys requested Nora Rudin, and the court approved it and actually ordered the county to pay her fees. Rather than just go off the court order, which we've done in the past, sometimes those experts will bill us for things that are unanticipated, travel costs and the like. And so we've decided to enter into agreements with the experts as they're approved by the court so that we have a little bit of control over what they're billing us for. So that's what this is.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners, comments? Ready for a motion?
Wonderful things to be able to control your costs.
It is. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's another step moving forward. I'll make a motion that we approve this contract buying between Weber County and Nora Rudin.
Thank you for that motion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. We're now to fun part of our agenda, commissioner comments.
It's great being back with you. I've just, I'll jump right in here and say, you know, we've, we've, while it's great to be here in person with you all, I've enjoyed our association via Zoom and these other virtual ways too. We've got a lot done. I can't, if anything else, I think we've had more meetings than we used to because we don't have to travel from place to place. It's been a, a very effective time for us over the last six, eight weeks. So let's hope that our, our citizenry and all of us remember to stay safe and, and so we don't, we can stay at an orange and progress towards yellow, and then hopefully to green and get back to where we were.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Just similar comments. It's a good work with you all. And our county has done an amazing job during this COVID time. And we just gotta keep the pressure on and make sure that we do what we should be doing to keep, I'm way impressed that we had zero new cases this last weekend. And Melissa, we appreciate you getting us those numbers. So it's cool.
Absolutely. And I would, I would say this, and I would comment on Commissioner Harvey's that we, I think we've been as busy or busier with our Zoom meetings. But I've been very impressed with the productivity, the questions, the opportunity people have had to weigh in. So I really don't feel we've skipped a beat on these Zoom meetings in terms of the involvement of our elected officials and department heads. I hope they feel the same way. And I look forward to a time when maybe we can make those an option rather than requirement, which we're pretty close to that right now. So with that.
You know, Mr. Chair, I've been surprised how well these Zooms have worked. You know, very few things work as well electronically as they do in person. But that Zoom, I think it absolutely does. And it cuts down some of the sidebars and gets you right in and right out. And they're pretty doggone efficient. I really quite enjoy using them.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I was on a Zoom meeting with my private business earlier today. And it's really amazing how much ground you can cover on a Zoom meeting, especially with people that are all across the county and in a short period of time get a lot done. And I think that's what we're hearing from private enterprise across the country, is that this is gonna change a lot of the requirements for office space, moving forward, meeting requirements. Because I think people have found out that this is, in some cases, more productive than meeting in person. So I look forward to, as we analyze going forward, the opportunity to use this in the right cases. So it gives us that additional tool in our toolbox, so to speak, commissioners, to make sure we conduct the Weber County business in an orderly, professional manner. So.
You know, I, I mentioned to you yesterday, I was on the phone over the weekend with a friend of mine that owns Knight Swift Trucking. He's one of the owners. And they mentioned that they had 28,000 office employees, and 90% of them were working from home. And they haven't missed a beat. And so now, all of a sudden, them, as well as all these others you're talking about, are all questioning their need for office. They're saying, gee, this works really good. Why build a lot of offices? It's surprising how well it works. So I suspect it will change the way we do business in the future.
It's gonna be the new world.
Yeah.
Yeah. The new normal, I would say. So anything else? Commissioner Harvey? Okay, I'm ready for a motion. Final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm not sure. I kinda like this. We haven't met in a month and it feels good. But I'll second that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much. See you next week. Back here.